The Clerk will please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the Clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise as I invite Counselor Murphy to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everybody. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce Father John Unie from St. Cecilia's Parish in, I guess, in the Back Bay, I guess, to deliver today's invocation. Many of us remember Father Unie for his wonderful send-off of former Mayor Kevin White at his funeral back in February of 2012. And more recently, Father Unie presided over the funerals of the two fallen firefighters, Michael Kennedy and Lieutenant Ed Walsh, this past March. Father Unie is one of the young, energetic, up-and-coming leaders of our clergy in the city that the Catholic Church so desperately needs to continue to infuse life and vigor in and across its parishes around the city of Boston. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce my friend, Father John Unie.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, all of your counselors. It's good to be here today. I'm not so young, though. That's the only problem, getting old here.
Well, you are when this priest up here.
Yeah. Well, let's call on the God of our youth and our longevity as we pray. Lord God, you know we come from different understandings of you, different faith backgrounds, but we all understand you as that God of love, goodness, and strength. We thank you for this beautiful day, the September Day, for the talent, generosity, and goodness of all the members of this council. We ask you to bless this council. Don't just give them book smarts as they go through their duties, but give them wisdom. Bless our city and all who are in positions of leadership. Bless our mayor in his first year. And help us, God, to put the interests of others first. You be a voice for the voiceless to lead by example as best we can. And help us to be leaders of authenticity and integrity, authentic in our concern for others. God bless this meeting today, its discussions and decisions. Guide us as individuals and as a body in your ways of service, generosity, wisdom, and love. In your name we make this prayer. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Unie. Thank you for that inspiring message. And on behalf of all of us, thank you for what you do as a spiritual leader for our city. Counselor Murphy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, plural.
Counselor Murphy will escort Father Unie from the Diaz and the chamber. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk, please.
Docket number 1469, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jerome Smith as chief of civic engagement. And docket number 1470, communication was received from Counselor Matt O'Malley that he will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meetings on Wednesday, September 24th, and Wednesday, October 1st, 2014.
Docket 1469 and docket 1470 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, reports of committee.
Docket number 0928, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on May 21st, 2014, docket number 0928, ordinance creating a college athlete head injury gain day safety protocol, submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0928.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak on this matter and recommending that the matter pass in a new draft. The matter was sponsored by our colleague, Counselor Josh Zachem, referred to the Committee on Government Operations on May the 21st. The committee held a public hearing on July 8th and held a working session on August the 12th. Basically, the purpose and the scope would require athletic programs sanctioned by the NCAA and located in any part of Boston develop an emergency medical plan establishing a safety protocol. And at this time, I'll defer to the lead sponsor to go into a little more detail. And again, we'll be asking that we pass on a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for his guidance and leadership on the Committee on Government Operations on this bill. I see we have some representatives from colleges and universities here today. This has been a collaborative process as we discussed at the committee hearing and the working session and when this bill was introduced. I think it's necessary to build on the work that Counselor Murphy has done in the past on our younger folks who are playing sports. I think this is something that we read in the newspapers every day, the dangers of head injuries and long-term trauma and medical issues is prevalent in many of the more contact-oriented sports, football, men's lacrosse, ice hockey. So this bill would put into effect some basic standards requiring that folks with medical training are on-site for these games when they are played in the city of Boston, make sure that protocols are put in place beyond the very bare bones that is required by the NCAA. I think many of our colleges and universities in the Boston area do a lot of this already, but I do think it's incredibly important that we, as a city, make a statement and we say, "This is required." We need to make sure that we're taking very seriously the health and safety of what are, you know, folks, you know, between the ages of 17 and 22, you know, really young people who are out there, you know, playing their hearts out and might not necessarily want to say, "I'm going to go sit on the bench for a little while. I'm not going to come back into this game after I got hit, after I got my bell rung." And having these experts on-site to do that evaluation in concert with the college athletic departments, I think, goes a long way in doing this. I want to thank all the folks from the institutions, the medical experts, the Public Health Commission, you know, Office of Corporation Counsel that participated in the working session. I think it was very productive, and I look forward to passage, so I ask my colleagues to join me in passing this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to commend Counselor Zachem on his tenacity for bringing this forward and seeing it through to its conclusion. And I want to commend Counselor Flaherty for his work as chair of the committee. This legislation builds on work that we did in 2013 involving concussion training and concussion protections for kids playing on Boston's fields, gymnasiums, and community centers. And it goes a step further. It brings the college and university community together and brings the NCAA, excuse me, I knew it was a lot of letters, NCAA, who traditionally doesn't listen to localities because once they make a protocol, it sticks around the country. We did our concussion ordinance. We were quickly followed by Chicago and by Los Angeles, and other cities and towns are moving to protect their younger children on that. But this is a big step because with this one piece, the NCAA has bought in. And when they buy in, they buy in around the country. So congratulations to Counselor Zachem, and I look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor McCarthy.
Really a job well done. This protocol and ordinance couldn't come at a better time. We now live in a time, really, where there's three collision sports in a row with the emergence of lacrosse, football, hockey, and lacrosse. Generally, all of the guys that I coach now, they do all of those things right in a row. So literally, it's about nine months of constant contact. And having a protocol with holes in it at this time really is not serving our youth well. I hope the MIA takes a good look at what we've done here, maybe take that next step to get into the high schools as well. I will be supporting this, and congratulations, Josh.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise also to congratulate Counselor Zachem on this important legislation. I think it's absolutely important that we not only look out for high school students in the city of Boston, but also considering that education is really the hallmark of the city of Boston, that this legislation extends beyond the high school students and also into the ranks of colleges. And I also do want to acknowledge Counselor Murphy's work on this. There are some important new technologies that have been put forward to actually look at this, and new helmet technologies and things of that sort. And I think we should urge our high schools as well as colleges to continue to think about that. But I think this protocol, which is unlike the protocol that was when I was in school, it was basically like, "Shake your helmet. Are you okay? Okay, good. Get back in the game." And so the fact is that there are actual experts and protocols that actually can help make sure that our young people are actually safe and that there isn't permanent damage because we also know that concussions over the course of time can cause permanent damage. Thank you for this legislation. And also, I thank you for those folks who will never know the reason why they're safe. There's a lot of folks who will never come into this building, in particular, young people in college, but you are making them safer. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Nice time. Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0928 in a new draft. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0928 has been passed in a new draft. Madam Clerk, docket 1232.
Docket number 1232, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on July 20th, 2014, docket number 1232, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $119,000 for the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health under the second FY13 jail diversion program grant for the purpose of providing assistance and referrals for individuals with mental illness and/or emotional disturbance, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
The Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Counselor Murphy, on docket 1232.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Thursday, the Committee on Public Safety met to hear docket 1232, which is the second grant from the Mass Department of Mental Health to the Boston Police Department, the second totaling $119,000, to allow for mental health professionals to ride along in police vehicles during normal course of business in the city of Boston. And we are finding a way to actually diagnose on scene folks with mental illnesses, and there are many in the city. It's my hope that we will pass this and move it forward today to continue those funds flowing to our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1232. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1232 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please record Counselor Yancy as present? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, Matt is recently heard for possible action. Please.
I'll read the three together.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1159, message and order for the confirmation of Ms. Helen Y. Wong as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for term expiring January 4th, 2016. Docket number 1160, message and order for the confirmation of Mr. Mark Fortune as a member of the Boston Housing Monitoring Committee for a term expiring January 4th, 2016. And docket number 1161, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ms. Diana Christmas as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for term expiring on January 4th, 2016.
The Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Housing, Counselor Baker, on docket 1159 through 1161.
Thank you, Mr. President. The BHA Monitoring Committee was formed through a homeroom petition in 1989, following a period of which the BHA was under receivership due to concerns around management and performance practices at the agency. At that time, the BHA Board of Directors was abolished and a new form of governance was established for the authority. And part of this governance structure was the Monitoring Committee, which is a nine-member body whose duty is to periodically review matters relating to the management and performance of the BHA. The Monitoring Committee reviews and approves such items as BHA's budgets, modernization applications, and property dispositions that reduce the total number of public housing units. Under this law, all of the members of the Monitoring Committee must be residents of the city of Boston. Five members of the Monitoring Committee must be public housing residents. One must be a BHA rental assistant participant, and these members are appointed directly by the mayor. The three members who are not public housing residents are to be selected by the mayor. That's who we're speaking about today, subject to confirmation of the Boston City Council. Yesterday, we had a hearing, and we had the three proponents in, Ms. Helen Wong, Mr. Mark Fortune, and actually, Ms. Diana Christmas did not come, but we have her credentials on file. It was a good hearing. It made me feel good about our confirmation powers because now we get to put names with the faces of this committee here, and I believe we should pass these matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker moves acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of docket 1159. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1159 has been confirmed. Counselor Baker moves acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of docket 1160. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1160 has been confirmed. And Counselor Baker moves acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of docket 1161. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1161 has been confirmed. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1225, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend federal fiscal year 2014 continuum of care of $24 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Housing, Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two issues. I believe the grant may be for $25 million, but also I'd like to keep this in committee.
Okay. Thank you. Docket 1225 will remain in the Committee on Housing. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1471, Counselor Linehan offers the following ordinance amending the city of Boston code, ordinance chapter 2-8.1, salary of city counselors.
Chair recognizes President Linehan.
And thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you very much. What you have in front of you today is an ordinance which is the only mechanism that we have as a council, which the mayor has, and department heads to make salary adjustments. And although this is quite awkward for us, that we have to proceed on our own salary adjustments, there's much precedent for it, and it's gone on for decades within this city. It is truly the only mechanism for us to increase salaries for the mayor, for the council, and for the department heads. The Boston City Council's last adjustment was in 2006, which, the current salary of $87,500. The prior eight years to that, 1998 through 2006, there were three salary adjustments, three, from $54,500 to the present $87,500, which was a significant increase of over $30,000 over that eight-year period. The increase that this ordinance is looking for is less than that, by $5,000. There was also an increase in 1994 from $45,000 to $54,500. So over two, three years incrementally, there had been raises until we got to this position in 2006, which is the entire term that I've served here on the body. I'm here plus seven years. This is over eight. And it's something that we have to address, uncomfortable, but something we have to address. This ordinance is comparable to the ordinance amending category 1A offices, which include the police and fire commissioner and the director of administrative services. We did that earlier this year, and with a range of $200,000 to $250,000, to see that we have the best police commissioner, that we get the best fire commissioner, and that we can compete with other cities and towns for administrative service chief. There was an opportunity at that time for us to amend that particular ordinance, but we felt that this was something that the mayor wanted to make happen, and we moved on it, but not without the intention of eventually talking about elected officials' raises. Base wages for city of Boston employees increased over that eight-year period to was 2.7% for each year. That's basically from 2006 to the end of the contracts, which are 2016. This adjustment is less than that. It's 2.5. The ordinance does not seek any retroactive pay, and there were no increases for eight The Boston city, comparative city data is that in Philadelphia and Chicago, the salaries of councils is decided by an annual living adjustment in an ordinance. And I think that that's something that we need to look forward to as we move forward with this council. But right now, this is the only mechanism, an ordinance to approve a rate of pay for the city council. Philadelphia, city councilors make anywhere between $98,000 and $123,000. Chicago, their starting salary is $108,000, and they can increase to $115,000. Seattle ranges from $117,000 to $119,500. Washington, D.C., $125,000. And New York City has $112,000, but committee chairs receive $10,000 as chair. So many of them are making $122,000. There's been a lot of rhetoric about this in the paper, about whether you deserve or not deserve, and it's always a tough decision. And I appreciate that we're going to entertain this and have a hearing and move forward on this matter. This is open and a transparent process, and we'll continue to do that all the way through. The Boston City Council's, the entire City Council's annual budget is $5.2 million. It costs each Bostonian $8.60 per year to have a city council. It's a value, and I look forward to having the hearing, and I look forward to discussing this matter further. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Presley.
Thank you. Counselor President Linehan, you're right. It is very awkward. And I would just say that as elected officials, certainly, you know, we talk a lot about the responsibility and the position that we're put in to make tough votes. And tough votes require impromptu, tough discussions and conversations, which is why I'm glad that we're having a hearing, because we should be pushing ourselves, and I am certainly, to look at this, not from a myopic viewpoint, but as workers of this city, to make sure that we have a due and thorough process in the same way that we would in considering the raises for any worker as fiscal stewards in partnership with the mayor of this city. You know, that is our duty and our responsibility. And it is clear that we need to develop a system that is transparent, that has the highest form of accountability to the taxpayers of this city who pay our salary, and also predictability, both in the amount and also in the timing. So in that we have a new administration, which has afforded us a prompt to have tough conversations about residency and other contentious issues, this is a prompt and an opportunity for us to discuss the process of council raises. I also believe it is an opportunity while we're discussing council raises to talk about council terms. Because if you're going to talk about predictability, then when would this occur? Every two years? So we need to have a tough conversation. So, we need to have a tough conversation about process, about transparency, accountability, and predictability, council terms. And I think, in its current iteration, one of the things that I'll be looking to explore at the hearing is whether or not we should be lowering the amount. And again, I think it's necessary that we have a robust dialogue and conversation, considering all of these things, in the same way that we would contemplating a pay increase for any worker. So, these are just some of the things that I'll be looking forward to when we have that hearing. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. When I first ran for this office, you really don't think about the pay. I think people do come here because they're devoted to the city, they're devoted to their neighborhoods, and they want to be of service. Two conversations that I had while I was campaigning, one was with the police officer, and another was with a friend of mine that was working for Amtrak. I actually left the job in Amtrak to run for the city council. And both conversations were, what are you doing that for? It's not enough money. On Amtrak, I could make more money than what I'm making here now. I negotiated with the city as a union rep, fighting for wages. Most of the time, it was a 3% raise, pretty much, which, over the eight years, I think we get pretty close to a 3% raise. Some of my comments in the paper the other night, now, I spent the night, not the night last night, but reading through The Globe, The Herald, and then the comments. A lot of the comments are awfully simplified, how we don't do any work, we don't deserve anything, it's a part-time job. I know that my job is not a part-time job. Most of the people are saying that we are in a part-time job. They don't know what we do. The only place that I'm not a city councilor is when I go home, and I'm a dad, and I'm a father, and I'm a father and I'm a husband. Only place I'm not a city councilor. Every other minute of the day, I'm a city councilor. At the school, when I drop my kids off, I'm getting constituent service. I shop at 11 o'clock at night, I get constituent service. Constituent service, and I welcome it. I welcome that people feel okay to come up with me, and I'll do everything I can for those people in my district. But it's a 24-hour-a-day job, and I don't think that we're being treated fairly. So, I just want to say that I don't need a hearing to know which way I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Malley.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we all love this job, and serving the people in the neighborhoods of Boston is an absolute honor. And I also know how hard we all work. I think, as has been said, this is an incredibly uncomfortable conversation to have. It's unseemly, but the council president is right. This is the mechanism that we have. We set our own salary. I know several colleagues later today will be filing something that changes that, and I would certainly associate myself with any efforts to make it more transparent. But I think we can also make it simpler, following what the state legislature does. The state legislature determines their salary, either an increase or a decrease, based on the median income of Massachusetts residents. We ought to be doing the same for Bostonians. Then we wouldn't have to vote on this. It would be fluctuated, it would be indexed to that, the median income. People have talked about this before. This isn't a new idea. But just yesterday, I met with Counselor Baker in our respective capacities as chair and vice chair of the City Charter Committee. This is one issue that I'll be pushing forward, going forward. I know Counselor Presley has expressed an interest as well, taking this out of our hands. So, I think going forward, what I would like to see happen in this process is, one, I think we need to look at lowering the number that has been proposed, doing something smaller than that, and also, making sure that we don't end this year without having a problem, a changed city charter that would index the salary for all councilors with the median income of the City of Boston. What that would do would be to raise or lower. For example, in Massachusetts, if the median income went up 5.5%, the raise would be commensurate. If it were to go down, as it did a couple of years ago, it would also go down. I think that's the fair thing, and I think that's what we need to be going, looking forward to do going forward for that. Indexing it with the Boston median income and looking at a smaller number for this particular raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I rise to commiserate and empathize and support the president of the city council. I had the honor of serving as president back in 2001, and I was subjected to very intense criticism back then because I had the audacity to propose that the city council, the city councilors deserved more salary than what they were currently receiving. By the end of my term, we were not able to get that legislation passed, although, within months of the following term, my proposal was, in fact, implemented, to raise the salaries to $75,000. Some people might think that was, you know, a very exorbitant sum. I'm sure there are many who believe that the proposal before us is exorbitant as well, and it's very subjective. But, Mr. Chairman, I have a great deal of respect and admiration for each and every one of our colleagues. They're very committed, they're very talented, and I'm certain they can earn a lot more doing something else. But no one is here because of the salary of the city councils. But I would add to the remarks made by the president of the city council. Incidentally, I compliment him for his homework on the subject. I would just add one more statistic, and that is, today, there are well over 3,000 Boston city employees earning more than the current salary of a city councilor. But again, this is a very difficult, an arduous task, and one that no one here welcomes, but in the final analysis, it's our responsibility. And the other thing that's likely to happen if this goes through is that it's going to encourage even greater interest, perhaps, on the part of potential competitors in the next election. That's something that's likely to happen. But I think if it attracts even more talent to the city council, the more, the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Yancey. Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Again, this is government, and this is making sausage right now. Most folks in government who negotiate, they negotiate in a closed room with a negotiating team, and we are statutorily required to do it this way. I think we do need to actually look at the numbers, and I think we need to take a more holistic look at the numbers, and not only look at the numbers that we make, but also the numbers that the folks who work for us make. When we look at the numbers, and the Pew, Pew actually did an interesting study, and it actually looked at city councilors across the country in 2011, so these numbers are a little bit antiquated. The highest salaries were in Los Angeles, $178,000 in Los Angeles. And it's an interesting component, though. They actually also looked at how much they spent per seat. And we know that the Boston City Council, our budget is $5.6 million. So, I did a little math. It's about $400,000 per seat. The folks in L.A. are spending $1.7 million per seat. In Philadelphia, which the salary is more comparable, it's a northeastern city, they're spending $1.1 million per seat. So, when we have this conversation, it's not only the work that we do, but it is the work that the folks who work for us on a regular basis do, which is really hard and important work. I think this is an important conversation that we should have. But I also know that, as someone who lives in the City of Boston, who loves living in the City of Boston, who doesn't plan on leaving the City of Boston, that the costs that folks in our neighborhoods, in our communities, face, I have oil heat at my house, and it's getting a little chilly. I put on a blanket instead of turning the heat on, that those costs are costs that we face too. They're costs that our families have to deal with and face too. So, I think when we look at us as individuals, also us as elected officials, we are not, and I wasn't born in that right family, to have someone pay for this stuff for me. So, I think it is important that the public understand that we also face the rising costs here, too. I think it's important that we have an open and transparent process. I like Counselor O'Malley's suggestion of looking at some type of index that does a cost of living increase or decrease, right? So, at the state level, they actually have an index that actually went down a year. So, again, that's how cost of living actually works. So, I think there is something to be said about attaching our pay to some type of index. But it is something that we all do need to look at, and it's a really, really important factor to how folks are able to do the job, and also, to deal with the rising costs that we are not insulated from, based on the fact that we are elected officials. I look forward to being at all the hearings, and I look forward to having this important conversation that we must have as city councilors. Again, no one sent us here to do easy things. This is a difficult part, and most people's pay, most people's pay rating doesn't actually happen on HD camera. But when it comes down to it, it is an important thing that we must do as a Boston City Council, and I look forward to doing this work, this important work, and to have an open and transparent process and conversation about compensation for the Boston City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. And to wrap up, President Linnahan.
I empathize with all of us on this particular matter, and I just want to thank you for your openness and look forward to this hearing. This matter will end up in the government ops because it's an ordinance, as is our tradition, and we will invite the, the chair will invite the appropriate folks. Recently, someone challenged the ability of the city council to do its own raises in a conflict of interest law, and the Ethics Commission has contacted the city to let them know that that has occurred. So, I would ask that the chairman consider asking the Ethics Commission to come down here as part of the hearing and to explain, so that we, this, again, is a full, open, transparent process, and that we get all the information that we need as we move forward. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. And docket 1471 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1472.
Docket 1472, Council Linnahan offered the following order, approving a petition for a special law regarding an act concerning long-term homeowners.
Chair recognizes Council President Linnahan.
This is a home rule petition, which we all approved, I think, in the last session. And it's one that addresses the issue of escalating assessments and therefore, increase taxes on the longest-term residents in our City of Boston. And we passed it. It was signed by the previous mayor, and it went up to the State House, but they felt that there was some language that needed to be changed. We got this at the end of their session, but have been informed that if we move on this quickly, they'll move it through informal session. And so, I'm asking to suspend and pass this, which we've already approved. You have a copy of the home rule petition, and I request that you support that action. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just want to have my name added. Last year, I was a cosponsor. Somehow, it got dropped. I wanted to have my name added to this petition.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Murphy's name and my name as well. Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to commend the make-up and ask that my name be added, and to note that a lot of people in the City of Boston are justifiably concerned about becoming the victim of our own success. Because, to the extent that we're able to encourage investment in the City of Boston, even in the areas along the Fairmont Line, where we see a tremendous opportunity for further economic development, we also know that economic development can stimulate an environment that creates gentification. And I believe this measure is one that can mitigate against that by having a reasonable tax policy that doesn't punish the long-term homeowner. So, I commend the make-up and ask that my name be added.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Council Linnahan moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1472. Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, just to add his name. Counselor Tito Jackson's name. Add the name of Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Baker, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley. Going once. Okay, back to business. Counselor Linnahan moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1472. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1472 is passed. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1473, Council Linnahan for Counselor Jackson offered the following order for the appointment.
I'm sorry, I'm just catching up here, Madam Clerk.
I'm so sorry.
I'm confused because Counselor Seoma left his notes, and I have to move his notes out of the way so I can get to my notes.
Would you like me to read it again?
Yes, would you please?
Thank you. Docket number 1473, Council Linnahan for Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1473. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1473 has passed.
Docket number 1474, Council Linnahan for Counselor Sakum.
Counselor Sakum moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1474. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1474 has passed.
Docket number 1475, Council Linnahan offered the following order.
Counselor Seoma moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1475. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1475 has passed.
Docket number 1476, Council Linnahan offered the following order.
Counselor Seoma moves suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1476. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1476 has passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late file matter, which, in absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matter is so added. The clerk will read this matter.
Would you like first and last?
Would you please?
Offered by Councilors Michelle Wu and Josh Sakum in the City Council, an ordinance establishing an independent citizens' salary review commission, whereas principles of good government call for transparency, accountability, and public participation, especially when allocating taxpayers' dollars, and whereas the City of Boston has the opportunity to adopt an innovative model of participatory civic engagement in creating a citizens-led process to set the salary of the members of the Boston City Council, now therefore be it ordered, that the following shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Counselor Murphy, your button is pressed.
To remind you of Rule 5...
Ask, remind you of Rule 15 of the City Council. I don't believe that we can admit this under Rule 15 of the council here, having heard Docket 1471 a few minutes ago.
Can we recess for a minute? Say that again, let me just have to reset.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. And there is an issue with Rule 15 to be addressed later, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. You know, first I want to thank Counsel Zachem for partnering on this initiative and apologize to everyone for the late file. Eight years is a long time to go without reviewing salary levels and compensation against cost of living and other factors. And there's been a history, even though I haven't been around for eight years, I know there's been a history on the council of going for a long time without addressing pay raises and making adjustments. I suspect this is because, as mentioned earlier, it's always politically uncomfortable to bring this up and always calls into question conflicts of interest when elected officials do have to set their own salary. I think most importantly, there's so much need out in the neighborhoods that the last thing we all want to be doing is spending time debating what our own salaries should be. Yet, this is what the current system forces us to do. It's a salary set by ordinance that can only be adjusted by council action, creating a new ordinance in its place. So I think as we're having that discussion, it's important that we also open the discussion on how to do this differently in the future. So this ordinance follows the example of other states and cities that have established independent citizens' commissions to select their elected official salaries. Washington State, for example, 28 years ago, put into effect a citizens' commission. And they have all of their state-level officials' salaries set by this commission. It's, the members are randomly selected from voter registration lists and partially recommended by the state legislature. So this ordinance is meant to start the conversation on how to make our process truly independent. It's, the proposal is a commission that is made up of a majority of Boston residents randomly selected from active voter registration lists, plus some selected by the council, plus one selected by the Boston Municipal Research Bureau. I would like to address the fact that the Compensation Advisory Board exists and it's a body that's supposed to review and recommend salaries every two years. However, they are mayorally appointed and their report is only a recommendation. So they play a valuable role in advising the mayor on how to set the salaries of department heads and school committee members and others that he appoints. But for elected officials, the considerations are very different and thus their recommendations aren't automatically acted upon. So a commission with a different way to select the members and with a more automatic inclusion into the city budget would remove the political considerations from the process. I know several colleagues spoke earlier about indexing as another potential way to simplify the process and take it out of our hands. And I just want to, you know, this will be an open discussion and lots of alternatives on the table. I wanted to express my concerns with indexing for a couple of reasons. First, that you're never quite sure that you're indexing the right amount to begin with. And we look at a lot of our state legislators and having second jobs and the review of the overall amount doesn't happen quite as often when it's just automatic. Secondly, when there are automatic changes, if there are other factors besides cost of living that should factor in, those aren't taken into consideration. Maybe the nature of the job changes over time as city services become more professionalized. And finally, on indexing, I think we get the most accountability, true accountability, to our constituents and our citizens if it is a citizen-led commission. So finally, this, again, this is just a starting point for a discussion. And ideally, there'll be many discussions and many working sessions on the ideal composition of the board and how they're selected and the process and logistics and other options and how the Compensation Advisory Board fits in. But I ask that we make this investment now and this term in hammering out a new and different way of making these decisions in the future. An independent citizens' salary review commission would remove the political considerations and make sure that the Boston City Council could truly spend full-time making our city better and helping constituents. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking Counsel Wu and both our respective staffs for the work that they've all done on this over the last few days. I think this is obviously a timely, timely matter. And I think, you know, although I am a lawyer, I'm going to not delve too much into the details of this proposal right now. What I think is most important is it addresses, one of the central concerns, I think, that you yourself, Mr. President, mentioned during your remarks earlier and that many of our colleagues shared of the awkwardness and the issues with being a body that votes on our own salary. I think figuring out the exact mechanism is something that will be hammered out in committee on a couple of the matters that were introduced today. But I just think it's very important and it makes it, it restores confidence, not just the issue of transparency, because we are being transparent here on all these matters. We have an open meeting, it's a forum. Some of our colleagues mentioned we're on high-definition TV. But, you know, making, taking that out of here, I think, really is going to help restore people's confidence in the city government. I mean, I read some of the comments on the internet, I probably shouldn't. I don't know how many of my colleagues do. But, you know, knowing how hard we work, I think taking this out of the discussion is one of the best ways to move forward. So certainly look forward to a robust debate and discussion in committee and the working sessions on this and Counsel President Linehan's matters. But certainly urge a consideration on this. And I'll thank again Counsel Wu for her leadership on this issue as well. And I look forward to discussing it more. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't disagree with anything that Counsel Wu or Counsel Zachem said. I only said specifically that the city council has a rule and under, just looking at the page, motions, orders, and resolutions, 1471, ordinance amending city of Boston code, chapter, ordinance is chapter 2-8.1. That's in there. A late file comes in, amending 2.2-8.1. Under our rules, it cannot be added, it cannot be allowed in if you were to interpret the rules of the city council the way they have been interpreted. You can, the petitioners can, bring it up at the hearing on 1471 and suggest what comes out of a hearing is a lot different than what went in. That's the other process, strictly a process issue for me. And it's transparent because we're doing it during the hearing process, Mr. President. My only beef with it, thank you.
Thank you. I'll have one quick recess, the principals come forward again, and then I'll make a decision, okay?
Objection based on Rule 15 is accurate and that matter will not be entered into today's proceedings. And we've spoken with the principals and they will craft a different ordinance and one that would address the same concerns moving forward and file it at a later date. Again, we, these, one is that we appreciate the comments and appreciate the intention of this matter, of course. And also, it can still be part of the hearing discussion that will be held in government ops. So, thank you very much. We'll move on. Madam Clerk. Green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Hearing no takers. Oh, I'm sorry. No, there's two. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page three of 130473.
Could you repeat that again, Counsel?
0473 on page three.
Thank you. If only I could read, Counselor, would you all sit? Would you like me to read this?
It is in education.
Yeah, please, Madam Clerk, read this into the, read the matter.
On the Committee on Education, Docket number 0473, offered by Counselor Jackson, an order for a hearing to assess the state of adult education and effects of the VPS proposal to eliminate all funding for the adult basic education program. It was referred to committee on March 5, 2014.
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague in government, Counsel Presley, for the work that we did on this important matter. This was a matter that looked at the education budgets proposal to strike all funding for adult education. The city of Boston has the oldest school system in the country, but also for over 143 years has provided adult education. And we were able to work with, along with many of our colleagues, at, actually, all of our colleagues in this room, to restore funding for this vital and important program. It is a victory for the council, but most importantly, it's a victory for the city of Boston. And I think it is one that needs to be noted. I do want to move to place this on file, but I did want to have the opportunity to really give kudos to the council as a whole. Again, I'd like to thank Counsel Siomo for his leadership in the budget process, as well as you, Mr. President, for your leadership in that budget process. I also like to extend thanks to our mayor, Martin J. Walsh, for understanding how important this is to the people of the city of Boston and that we actually have a backlog of people rather than a need to cut it. So I just want to thank all of those folks and also place this on file. And I have one more, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, 0473 will be placed on file. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
On page four of 13.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. It is, yes, four of 13.
Madam Clerk, could you please read that?
In the Committee on Education, Docket number 0929, sponsored by Counselor Jackson, offered an order for a hearing to discuss the Boston Public School's food services program. It was referred to committee on 4/16/2014.
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This is also a project that I worked on with Counsel Presley that really looked at food, a topic that I am very familiar with, Mr. President, and our young people and how the process relative to the bid process goes forward. We were actually able to change policy. We were actually able to shine more transparency on how that process works and also put together a process, along with Counsel Presley herself, as well as her office, that actually means a great deal more healthy food for our young people. I actually taste test with actual experts, AKA young people from the district in this multimillion-dollar, multi-year deal. We know that we are moving, in particular in urban areas, towards a place where we're dealing with raises, actually exorbitant raises in diabetes, issues around obesity, and things that we need to look at as the folks who sign the checks relative to where money goes. So I think it's important that we, that we were able to actually change what happened there. And I don't know if this would be okay, Mr. President, if Counsel Presley would like to make a statement about this. She was intricately involved in this matter. And then I would like to go ahead and place it on file. Okay, through you.
The offer has been so made.
Okay. But again, I think this is something that the council gets an opportunity to really look at. And if anyone questions what goes on here, this is one of the things that we can also point to that has actually made the lives of our young people better. And also, I think most importantly, actually gives them a voice in what we heard from panels of young people, that they want to be part of this decision-making process. And I also want to, again, thank Counsel Presley and all of the others who attended the hearings and all of the young people and also experts in food who deal with this issue. And I'll just note that over half of the young people in the city of Boston are receiving 2/3rds of their calories from the Boston Public School meal program. It's a really important program to our young people. So what you get, we get out what we put in. And we want to make sure that we are putting in good and quality food for our young people. I'd like to move to have this placed. I'd like to move to have this placed on file. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Counselor Jackson is moving that 0929 be placed on file, so it will be. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are no late file matters today, so therefore, I'd ask all guests and members to please rise as the Council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo, Philip Concar. For Counselor Jackson, Adrian Gonzalez. For the Chair, Stephen Connolly, Anthony Chula, and Donald Bailey Jr. For Counselor McCarthy, Kathy McKay. For Counselor Yancey, Madeline Hall, Robert Wayne Johnson, Edward Mickles, and Michael Page. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. I have also received one late memory, and that is for Steven Valdo Balasari of East Boston from Counselor Lamartina. Sorry for that. So the Chair moves that when the Council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, September 24, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the Council is adjourned. Thank you.